Good evening. Welcome to this edition of Public Affairs: Public Access presented by Houston Area League of Women Voters Education Fund in conjunction with Houston Media Source. My name is Quinton Wiltz with the League of Women Voters Speakers Bureau. I'll be your host and moderator for tonight's event. Tonight, we highlight conversations with the candidates as we focus on Pearland City Council elections. We have with us tonight four candidates running for position six. We have with us, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the candidates. We have with us Terry Gray.
Hello.
Monica Russo, Trent Perez, and Adrian Bell. At this time, I'd also like to invite the viewers at home to participate in tonight's conversation. You can do so by calling 713-807-1794, and that number will be on additionally throughout the program should you forget. So at this time, I'd like to give the candidates about two minutes to introduce themselves and tell us why they're running for position six. Terry Gray?
Thank you. I'm Terry Gray. I have been a resident of Pearland since 1957, and I guess the reason that I'm running, it's, you know, there are two kinds of people in this world. There's people who plant trees and there's those who enjoy the shade. And I've just never enjoyed the shade. I've still been planting trees. I raised my family in Pearland after I got out of high school and went off to college for a while, went to work for AT&amp;T, Southwestern Bell, spent three years in the Army, had a total of 28-year service with the telephone company. I was asked in 1976 to serve on the City Council of Pearland by the then Mayor Carlton McComb. I served from '76 to '78. Then I was elected again in 1980 and served two terms until 1986. And during that period of time, we initiated a lot of things that are still being, are being activated today. There was a lot of things that I learned during that period of time that there's just no substitute for. I've been involved in other political things like a director on a couple of mud boards and a country place and in Baytown. So I have a background of being involved, have this great love for our community and the willingness to give. And like I say, I don't enjoy being in the shade. I'm going to continue planting trees. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for that. Next, we have Monica Russo.
Hi. My name's Monica Russo, and I'm running for Pearland City Council, position six. And the big reason I'm running is my husband and I are really dedicated to the city. We've been residents of Pearland for over a decade. We're raising two boys here, and we have a number of family members throughout the city. Most of my life, most of my career, has really been dedicated to serving others. I have worked for the Better Business Bureau as a media relations director, worked extensively with law enforcement there, with consumers and businesses on consumer protection initiatives. I currently work for Metro, one of the largest regional transportation providers here in the region, and work in the communications department. So it's really great to be here. Again, I've been involved in public service for quite some time, and I've served my community. I've been an HOA president. I've also been a member of the pastoral council of my church.
Thank you for that, Monica. Next, we have Trent Perez.
Hi. I'm Trent Perez, and I'm also running for Pearland City Council, position six. I'm married to my wife, Tally Perez, for almost nine years. We have three beautiful kids, Parker, who is age seven, Rory, who is age six, and Danny, who is age five. We love Pearland. We think it's a great community, and that's why I chose to run for city council is I want to help it to maintain that greatness. A little bit of my professional background, I'm a proud graduate of the University of Houston. I'm also a veteran. I served in the US Army right out of high school. I was a combat engineer. I'm a local small business owner. I own a company called PRD, Land Development Services. It's a civil engineering consulting firm. I'm also a former staff member for the city of Pearland. I worked as the Assistant City Engineer proudly for four and a half years, and in that time, got to learn a lot about how a city works, particularly how Pearland works. As a council member, I'd like to focus on several things. One, improving traffic. I know that there's a lot that struggle with traffic, particularly in the Shadow Creek area. Reduce our debt and control our spending. I'd like to fix the streets that are broken and deteriorating. I'd also like to have Pearland maintain the high safety rating that they have by supporting the police, the firefighter, and the EMS. I'd also like to address some of the flooding problems we have in some of the older sections of the community. As a civil engineer, I believe I'm uniquely qualified to be able to aggressively address these issues. And so Election Day is May 7, and I appreciate if you trust me with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Good evening. My name is Adrian Bell, and I'm also a candidate for Pearland City Council, position number six. I am not a politician, and I will always say that because I am a servant, and I believe that what we need to do is to serve one another. So that's my goal on city council. Our council is set up at all at-large seats, so therefore, we have to work as a collaborative team in order to achieve the city goals. And so I have a lot of background in teamwork and working on projects and working with others to help build and to achieve goals. My background has primarily been in business management. I am currently an elementary school teacher, and I'm also working on my doctorate at Texas Southern University in higher ed, Higher Education Administration. I should be able to say that, being in education, but that's my doctorate work. But I believe in giving back. I've always been involved in my community. I've always served at my church. I've always served the community that I've lived in and the community that I've worked with. So I believe that serving as an elected official will allow my ministry to be a ministry of service, and that's what I seek to do.
Okay. Thank you all for those intros. So we'll get started with the questions. We've hinted or we alluded to that Pearland has currently five city council positions. The position that you all are running for is position six. By the year 2017, Pearland will add two additional city council seats totaling seven city council positions. And as Ms. Bell mentioned earlier, all the city council positions are at-large. And so with all city council positions being at-large, if elected, candidates may serve up to two terms, two, three-year terms. Currently, there are no public plans that indicate Pearland will move to a single-member district. Would you be in favor of some single-member districts? And if you are, why? And if not, why not? And so, Mr. Gray, I'll start with you.
Sure. Single-member districts are, actually, they work very well in communities of our size. I know that there's been a lot of talk in the past about having a single-member districts, and I could support that. There's some downsides that I have seen over the years in communities. Take, for example, Houston, they have some small, little districts where those representatives don't want to be the representative of the whole town. They're just there for their own good, and that's not the kind of people that we would want elected. But I think from the quality of the people that we've had in the past in Pearland, having a district where it would represent a certain area would be a very fine, strong way of making a better presentation. Fortunately, right now, we have council members who look at the whole community and doing a great job. If it comes down to that, I would vote for single-member districts, yes.
Okay. Ms. Russo?
I think that at-large positions can actually work really, really well, provided that city council members, you know, represent everyone. But I think that as a city grows larger, that becomes more of a challenge. So I think that for a city like Pearland, which is growing as quickly as it is, adding as many people as it is, it does make sense to incorporate some single-member districts as well, so you could see a mix like you do in Houston. So yes, I would support that.
Okay. Mr. Perez?
So I'm going to differ a little bit. I'm really not in support of Pearland districting right now. I do believe that there's value in the district when a single council member's responsibilities extend beyond what they can responsibly deal with. I don't think we're there in Pearland. The city, right now, city limits, it's posted 108,000. It's more, probably more close to 120 within the city limits. The city will grow and expand, but right now, a seven-member council with all at-large positions, I think, can very easily deal with all parts of the community. I think that the challenge with districts is that, particularly with a small city, that individuals will focus only on the issues of their part of town and may not necessarily hold responsibility to the other parts of town. And that's why I would not be in favor of it. So.
Ms. Bell?
I'm in favor of a mixed method. I believe that as Pearland continues to grow, that the size of the city, the number of the city council members, it's just going to be more responsibility. The city council works on a part-time basis, and to be very effective, I think if you have districts, if we, there'll be seven, if we had five at-large or two districts or just a mix of at-large and district positions, I think that that could be effective. Generally, you break into districts because you're trying to make sure a certain population is represented. Pearland is very diverse. It's diverse across the entire city. So we don't have the need to break into districts for that reason, but we could have the need to break into districts to make sure that we're represented, citizens are represented equally across the city.
Okay. And, you know, that's interesting. You mentioned diversity, and Pearland and the greater Houston area is increasing in diversity. So what do you see as value in our collective diversity? And what would you do to capitalize on this distinction as one of the most diverse regions in the nation? Mr. Perez, I'll start with you.
So diversity is one of the most key components to Houston, one of the things that I'm most proud of when I visit other cities to brag about. University of Houston is the most diverse university in the nation. When I went to college there, I got to meet a number of people from various backgrounds, various countries, various beliefs. I believe that any community benefits from that diversity. Having spoken to people of various backgrounds in the city, having visited the Islamic Center, having visited numerous churches in town, I think that everybody would, has the opportunity to bring from their belief system a unique perspective, and that allows us to have a better sense of group thought. And so I am proud of Pearland's diversity, and I think it, in general, makes us a much, much better city.
Monica?
You know, it's interesting. If you listen or follow Dr. Stephen Kleimberg with the Kendra Institute, the region that we're in is actually, where we are today, is what America is going to be in 25 years from now. And it's really one of the great strengths of this area is having that diversity. You bring a lot of new ideas, a lot of new thought, and I think that Pearland is actually a city that is incredibly diverse. We have people that come from all over the world to live in Pearland. It's a suburb that's very close to Houston, job centers, and so it's very desirable. And I think that we have to continue to encourage that. And again, if you look at a lot of the neighborhoods, yes, there are a number of countries well-represented in the Pearland area, and we have to recognize that, and that is a strength, absolutely.
Mr. Gray?
Let's just keep doing the things that we're doing. I mean, that's why we are where we are today. We're doing all the right things. People accept people, whoever they are, whatever size they are, whatever color they are, whatever mix they may have. It's a loving, kind community that we're in. Let's just keep on doing what we're doing well. Thank you.
I think one way we can capitalize on the diversity of our community is to have a cultural awareness day or start having cultural festivals. I think that's one way, like at the Town Center, we can bring cultures together, we can highlight cultures, we can have international festivals where you have different cultures that are represented and that are celebrated. Last I checked, Pearland ISD had 62 languages that are spoken in the school district, which is just an amazing amount of diversity that's in the city. And so I think we capitalize on that by highlighting and letting those cultures shine, so everybody can see that we have, like the mosque that we have, we have a Buddhist temple. We have a lot of diversity in Pearland that you may not know about if you're not a part of that culture. So I think we bring it out, showcase it, and we let the different cultures bring their culture and showcase it.
Okay. Thank you. So you mentioned Pearland Town Center, and a lot of people in Pearland are familiar with Town Center. If you're not, it's a retail space just south of 288. Pearland currently leads the region in retail growth and specifically dedicated for that area, and retail is a substantial part of the city's budget as far as revenue, revenue stream. So currently, 51% of the city budget is allocated to public safety. And when candidates speak of crime prevention, they focus on Town Center area, but they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. However, in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, poverty, and opportunity. So what crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime? I see you're ready to go, Monica.
Well, I'm a big believer in community policing. You know, at the end of the day, it's all about relationships. And when you have police officers that are out in the community conversing with residents and getting to know residents, they create that relationship there. And I've seen it happen, you know, with other police departments as well, where, you know, when you have that relationship, you're kind of in tune, you have your ear to the ground, you know, the police officers know what's going in on the streets before it actually even happens. And so I think that's a big benefit to really focusing on community policing initiatives. It's really people getting to know, the police officers who patrol their area, and police officers getting to know the residents who live there.
Okay. No specific order? It's anyone, so it's Trent. I'll go with you.
So Pearland currently has 154 police officers. They just asked or added eight more police officers this year. That puts us into about one police officer for every 750 residents. I am not an expert as to whether that 750 to one ratio is the best, but we do have experts that are. We've recently commissioned a study for an outside consultant to tell us how well we're staffed and give us a little bit more insight. You know, I'm anxious to see the results of that study to see if there's a possibility that adding more officers would increase our safety. But to be fair, Pearland is routinely rated one of the safest cities in America. I think what we're doing now, what Chief Doyle is doing, what Assistant Chief Spires is doing, is working. We have several programs that, I think, help to keep that rating. Some of the ones that I'd like to highlight, we just got a grant to add body cameras to the police officers. I think that helps keep the police safe, and it helps to keep the people who are pulled over or engaged with the police safe, knowing that they're recorded. And that came at a low cost to Pearland because, again, it was a grant. Shadow Creek has a great program with their camera system. I'd like to see if we can expand that to other communities. I think the police have bragged about that significantly, about being able to utilize that footage. And another program I think is kind of underrated, but Pearland does a great job with National Night Out. All of the council members and other prominent staff go out on National Night Out and meet people in the community. I think that does a lot of good.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
I also like the community policing as well. I think it's a really good way for the residents to meet the police officers. So as you're going down the street and you see a police car, you're not just intimidated, but you actually recognize the police officer that's behind the wheel. I think that's a really great way for the community to know our police officers, but I also like to address the problems that associated with crime, with the jobs and the poverty. One way that we can continue is to make sure that we have jobs, because people that don't work, they commit crimes a lot of time. And then we do have students or children in Pearland that need help. We need food pantry, and we have the Pearland Neighborhood Center, but we still have people that, everyone in Pearland is not middle-income. Everyone doesn't live in a $300,000 house. So we still have a population that does need help, and so we provide that with food pantry. I'm on the board of Life Skills House, and we're seeking to get a home in Pearland to where we can help young mothers and teach them life skills and where they'll have a transitional living. And those are the type of things that we need, because as Pearland has continued to grow, we still have the social problems that come with that, which is drugs, which is crime, and we can't kid ourselves as though those things won't exist, because they do. And that's just a part of society. But what we do is to bring in programs, we make sure we have jobs, we make sure that we have programs where children are fed, and they're fed during the summertime when school is out, and that we have, the police has, have the program with the exchange. So if you buy something online, you can go to the parking lot and exchange it. I think that's a really good program that they came up with, so you don't have to be in fear of that.
Okay. And Mr. Gray?
Goodness, there's not much that I can improve on after that three folks hit on just about everything. I'd say, you know, keeping our first responders as our top priority is certainly always a key to one of my issues. And, you know, the values that we have start in the home and in the churches and our schools. And our schools and churches are doing a great job of communicating good values. I can only encourage all of the things that these folks have said. I'm 100% behind that.
Okay. Thank you. So since you went last, I'll give you the opportunity to go first this time. We all like to say that we support our first responders, public safety, but, you know, there's always shortfalls, and we aren't able to appropriate funds to every department. So the next question is, would you be in favor of raising wages for public employees, police, fire, EMS, or other city employees, given the current status of the budget?
Wow. Given the current status of the budget, we're going to have to look at some additional revenue, if we were going to have any large increase in it. We've got a shortage in our pension fund already. We're paying as much interest as we are principal on our debt. We're going to pay as much, almost a half a billion dollars in interest alone by the year 2036 if we don't incur any more debt. So those are good questions, and I don't have a total answer to that, except to say that, yes, Pearland has a growing community. It has a growing budget, both revenue and expense side. I'd like to be able to look at the numbers a little closer, get the balance sheet a little bit better. We've got a great accountant on our council. The last thing that I would like to see done is anything that might happen to lower our safety in our community. That would certainly be my highest priority at this point. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Adrian? Ms. Bell?
I would like to make sure that everyone has a living wage, and I think that that is the case right now for our city employees. I would listen to any argument that seeks to raise the wages based on what our budget is and what our budget allows.
Okay. Mr. Perez?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I want to maybe offer a little clarification. Pearland does not have a pension program similar to the city of Houston. It's got a modified retirement plan. So the employees pay into that, and they get a return. It's very similar to 401K. As far as our staff, you know, it's a difficult thing to answer, and as a former staff member, I can tell you, I struggled with this. I was very happy at my job, and I very much enjoyed what I did, and I was comfortable with the salary that I agreed to, but I felt I was good at my job, and others in the community felt like I was good at my job, and ultimately, the private sector offered me significantly more than I could turn down. When you have good staff members, that tends to be what happens. Pearland has experienced a significant amount of turnover, similar to other cities, and we struggle because of that. And it doesn't thus affect fire and first responders. It affects the building permit department. When you have, when you have four city engineers over a six-year period, it's difficult to maintain consistency. I think it's important for us to make sure that we fund staff appropriately, but right now, I don't think the budget would allow that.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Russo?
I think we also have to consider the budget, but I still want to make Pearland a desirable place to work. And so we have to be on par with other cities, or at least keep that in consideration when we're looking at staff salaries. But this is why a big part of my platform goes back to the way the city grows. One of the big problems is that our tax base hasn't grown into our debt, and we have to ask ourselves, why is that? We really do need to focus on smart growth and development. We need to focus on development that is going to improve the public realm and increase property values around it and create an environment where we're going to draw more businesses here, create an environment where we're going to bring more visitors here and people who want to live here. All of that can contribute back into our funds and help us keep and retain quality staff members and quality people.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, you raised some really good points that kind of push into some other questions that we have prepared. You know, one of the questions is more direct, and so I'll ask this question, but then I'll tie it into another question. So the one question is, you know, we talk about budget shortfalls, we talk about ability to pay employees and being able to staff appropriately. So, and you also mentioned the tax, tax base. We've just had recent property tax increases, evaluations put out, but at the same time, our tax rate has kind of been steady. So one, would you be in favor of a tax increase, right? And the other would be, you mentioned bringing in additional revenue, right? So we all know that we, Houston is a huge job center for many of the people who work in Pearland. And so there have been many, many layoffs in the oil and gas sector, and many people have been affected. So what role can the city of Pearland play to promote job growth within the major supporting industries within Pearland to bring in additional revenues? And again, that other question would be, would you be in favor of raising taxes? You're looking at me, Mr. Gray. So you've already answered first, so I'll go around. Ms. Russo?
Okay. To address the first question, am I in favor of a tax increase? Obviously, it's not, it's not something that's popular, but I feel that, you know, when 30% of your revenue is going to operations and 70% is going to debt service, you really do have to take a hard look at what your options are. And if, and if that, you know, includes a tax increase, then I, I mean, I could see it. But a small, you know, but here's the thing I think people need to think about. You know, a tax increase of a couple cents, for example, really comes out to maybe about like $5 a month. You multiply that over the course of a year, it's really not that much money, and it's an investment in your community, because the way, rate that we're going right now is just not sustainable, and people aren't going to want to live here if we can't pay for police officers, if we can't pay for basic infrastructure, if we can't pay to just maintain the city and maintain the quality of life. And then to address your second question, the role of the city to promote job growth, I think one of the great things about Pearland is our location. I know a lot of people moved to Pearland because it is very convenient, it is close to major employment centers. A lot of folks I know of work in the medical center, which really hasn't been impacted by the oil prices like some of the other areas in Houston have seen. But I think it's really important that we create an environment that is going to want to make people to live here. And the reason I say that is because when people move here, the businesses follow. So when you create an environment that provides an excellent quality of life and you create a city that people want to move to, the businesses are going to come, and it becomes a, you know, a cycle. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Perez?
So there's a lot to unpack with what you said. I think with respect to tax increases, look, I'm not in favor. Nobody is. Nobody's in favor of charging more money. I am conservative when it comes to how I want to look at my debt, the debt of the city. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to take a hard-nosed stance and eliminate options that are viable. As Monica alluded to, you know, a relatively small tax increase, such as one cent per every $100 of evaluation, would equate to somewhere around $50 a year. Now, if you, if you talk to the citizens and say, for an additional $50, we can better fix your streets, we can make sure that... fix your streets, we can make sure that, um, homes and neighborhoods like the Linwood subdivision don't flood anymore. I think most people, most reasonable people would say, uh, yeah, that's worth the investment. But we need to be careful. We need to be careful about how we're exploring that. With respect to smart growth and what the city does to attract, uh, business and diversify our economy, I think that our Economic Development Commission, which is headed by Matt Buchanan, uh, does a great job. And I can tell you that not just from an outsider's perspective, I've been involved in the process. Mitsubishi was looking for a, uh, for a place to put a heavy industrial plant and I helped to bring them to Pearland. Um, and I worked exclusively with them and collectively with Pearland to go through the development process and get them a development agreement. The incentive package is employee-based. I think that's an important component.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bell?
When it comes to a, a tax increase, I would listen to arguments for tax increase or against tax increase, as long as we are not affecting the safety and the, uh, hampering the quality of life of Pearland residents. But I would have to listen to that and I would not be hard-nosed, uh, in either direction because I believe in having an open mind, but listening to the arguments of why we needed to and what we needed to do. And also, we have to be very careful that we communicate well with our residents of what actually is going on, so it's not just a surprise of an increase. When it comes to growth and what the city can do, it is very important that our infrastructure stays strong. People want to relocate to cities that have property values that increase, that offer good schools, that have good streets, where there's not a lot of flooding. And one thing we have to make sure is that we continue a high quality of life for those, uh, for the residents that we have. One thing I'd like to see Pearland grow is in the area of entertainment. If you have someone coming into the city and if the business is considering relocating and then the family comes in and they look at Pearland and they look at Sugar Land, I don't want people going to Sugar Land because Sugar Land has more entertainment options. I want them coming to Pearland. So, I think as a city, we need to grow our entertainment options for residents.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Gray?
I'd like to answer this kind of in reverse. When I look at how we've grown over the past, uh, the Old Town site and the east side of Pearland grew because of the employees that worked at the Johnson Space Center. And that was the beginning of our real strong improvement in, in values. Then we opened up 288 out on the west side of town and more and more people who were working downtown for the oil and gas companies started coming into Pearland. And then the migration of all of the people working in the hospitals have drawn all this hard-working, smart, intelligent people to our community. And keeping up with that infrastructure has been a very big challenge. And for the most part, they've done a good job. They've kept the taxes low, but I never say never. And it's just not something that's in my vocabulary to say, never will I do anything. It's just not something that I can do. So, uh, we're attracting people because of the oil and gas and the, and just the Houston in general has such a strong dynamic economic place and we're very thanks to be there. If we have to have a tax increase, it may have to happen. I never say never.
Okay. All right. I know that's anytime in, in this economic or political climate, it's always difficult to talk, more taxes, more money or something like that. So, um, but, so I, I commend you all for, for, for really tackling that question. Uh, you know, at this time, uh, we, we do take calls and I believe we have a, a call, a caller?
Hello?
Hello? Yes.
Hello?
Yes. You're live with us.
Yeah. I have a question for the, uh, the handsome moderator there. I was wondering if he could ask the, uh, the candidates what they think about reforming the alcohol laws? Are they for reforming alcohol sales in bars or in restaurants?
Uh, so, uh, would you care to give us your name or?
Yes. My name is Jason Perry. I'm a east side resident.
Okay. Jason Perry. And you're, you're a resident of Pearland. So, I don't know if you all heard the question, but the question is, um, you know, currently as more, uh, retail businesses or more businesses come to Pearland, uh, they'll realize that our, our laws regarding alcohol are a little bit different than city of Houston Harris County. And so, um, what our caller is, is asking is that what do you, what would you do, uh, to address these inconsistencies or consistencies, uh, to either change or, or keep in place the, the current processes and policies we have for alcohol, uh, retail? Did you all get that?
I did.
Okay. Good. So, Trent, I said, you, you want to answer?
So, um, recently, there was, um, there was a group of people who were trying to create a referendum to change the alcohol laws in Pearland. Uh, simplistically, the way the law is written is that no business can, can serve, uh, pure alcohol. Uh, they have to be a restaurant and 40, um, or 51% of their overall sales must be from food. Um, they cannot just be a bar. Um, that is, um, a consequence somewhat of Brazoria County being a dry county, um, and Pearland off, having a concession to allow a little bit of nightlife and a little bit of, uh, enjoyment when people go out to, to eat. Uh, the referendum, uh, failed. Uh, it was not able to get enough signatures, uh, but they will try again. I think it's interesting. Um, I wouldn't say that it is a solution to our budget problems. I think that, uh, ultimately, it could hopefully raise, similar to what, um, Katie raised, which is in the $500,000 range. That doesn't take Pearland from an inviable debt, uh, issue to a viable debt issue. It doesn't change our economy. Uh, but I would be interested in if the referendum succeeds, uh, looking at the zoning and making sure it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bell?
I actually signed the petition and I am for it, for the change to where a restaurant can operate. Um, and I know we had businesses that went, that went out of business because their alcohol sales exceeded the food. I believe as long as it's in the appropriate places, it's not close to schools, it's not close to churches, that I think, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Um, Ms. Russo?
Um, I have no problem with it either. You know, if the voters want it, um, then, then there shouldn't be an issue with it. I, I do think that we can create special entertainment districts, uh, for, uh, businesses that would, you know, serve liquor, but I also want, you know, I think there's sometimes some misunderstanding with, with, with how this all works. You know, a lot of, there are a lot of nice restaurants out there that serve very expensive, um, you know, Scotch, for example. Uh, and folks could easily spend more on, on the alcohol sales than they could on their, on their, on their dinner. Um, so, you know, I don't think this means that you're gonna have a bunch of, you know, raunchy bars coming to town. Um, I think this could be a good draw to bring some, you know, nicer establishments into the city. Um, and, and again, and I think it would help, help, uh, help broaden the tax base.
Okay. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, thank you. I think Trent hit on a, on a big part of it. It all started back when Brazoria County was dry and it was. I remember when you couldn't buy anything but beer in the town. But, you know, I'm for opening it up. I mean, goodness gracious, if you don't like what we're having here, you just gotta drive a little bit to the north and you're in Houston, you can have anything you want. So, why do we wanna lose the revenue to people who're gonna drive across the creek and drink there when they could just as easy to drink here? And I have the feel, same feeling about packaged liquor stores. I mean, if you wanna have something to drink and you want something from Specs or somebody that's not in our county or our city, just drive a couple of miles and you could buy it. Why are we losing this revenue? I'll extend that just one more thing. Why don't we have gambling? You go to Texas, I mean, you go to Louisiana, every car in the parking lot's from Texas. A lot of them are from Pearland. That's me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gray. So, I believe we have another caller on the line? No? Okay.
Did we answer his call?
I believe we answered his call. So, no, but, uh, you know, some very good comments. Um, so, kinda moving on, uh, that all kinda goes to quality of life, right? Um, you know, our, our hints to it. Uh, so, the next question is, you know, what are three primary quality of life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy around and serve the community at large? Uh, so, whoever would like to take, take that question, I'll ask it again. So, what are three primary quality of life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy, uh, to better the community at large?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, I think, uh, the, the largest metric of quality of life of any community is the crime rate. Uh, if crime is high, then nobody has a, a good quality of life. Um, I think it's important that, again, as I said before, that Pearland be aggressive about making sure that it maintains the high safety rating that it currently has. Um, as a civil engineer, uh, I'm a little biased on this issue, but I think traffic is a major part of, uh, the quality of life. I was talking to, uh, um, a lovely lady over in Copper Creek and, and Shatta Creek recently and she talked about having been in Pearland, uh, for a while and the traffic getting to the town center just taking longer and longer. Um, and not addressing that properly, uh, though it is being addressed, uh, but not addressing that properly as a community, uh, you tend to drive your citizens out. Uh, they want, they don't want long delay when they wanna go shop. Uh, I think that's important. Um, I, I think there's other, there's, there's probably a thousand other soft metrics that we could use. Uh, I'd hate to struggle to say it's just three. Um, but, you know, Pearland's a fairly happy place. Uh, and you can see that as a council member when you walk around, uh, you can talk to people around town, um, and listen to their complaints and, and hear what they're concerned with. And I think no specific item but listening would help us to, to drive, uh, the, have better understanding of, of what people are concerned with.
Okay. And Ms. Russo?
I think the three important factors to quality of life are going to be, uh, one, safe streets, um, two, mobility, and three, recreation and entertainment. Um, that, that's what makes a city desirable, whether they, you know, have good mobility, they have top-notch quality of life, um, especially me as a transportation professional. I, uh, I believe mobility is extremely important and it's something that the entire region is struggling with right now. Um, traffic, 20 years ago, maybe wasn't such a big problem, but it's a big problem now and it's going to continue to be a problem, uh, down the road. So, I think we really need to look at, uh, different ways, um, that we can address that, whether that is becoming more multimodal, um, here in the city. I, I know that other cities are looking at that. Um, other cities are also looking at what their city's gonna be like 20, 30 years down the road and they're planning for it. Um, the city of Sugar Land, for example, is taking a hard look at how they're going to use their land, how they're going to grow, um, and how they're going to make their city desirable for new residents, um, now and in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Uh, quality of life, uh, that's an interesting question. I think that they, the two previous have, have answered parts of it. The, as a responsible council member, maintaining the infrastructure of your water, your sewer and your, uh, police and your fire is all a major thing and certainly, traffic is one of the major things. Uh, I think we have to be looking down the road to, we live in a subsidence district, so, we can't continue drawing water out of the ground with wells. We're gonna have to have four more ways of having surface water and ways to provide down the future so that our kids and our grandchildren will be able to take a bath and drink water in the future, cause we can't continue just drawing it out of the ground. Um, and I think they've hit on it, you know, the, the quality of life in a community is based upon your, your roads, your infrastructure and all of the things that come about, the recreation and those kinda things often come about because of private industry. But if we encourage that, and I would, let's go for it.
Okay. Ms. Bell?
One thing, each year, the city has a citizen's survey. And out of that survey, it asks about transportation, it asks about, uh, quality of life issues and what is it that you like about the city, what you don't like about the city. And I think that is a really good indicator to use. One of the things that continues to grow is the dislike of, of, uh, traffic. Our traffic is atrocious along 288. When I first moved out in this area, I could get down to, uh, 59 and Westland in 20 minutes. And now, I can't get, uh, down 518 from the east side where I live to the west side in 20 minutes. So, transportation and traffic is a really hot item for all of our residents and it really does affect your quality of life if you're sitting in traffic on 518. And also neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, residents have to be pleased with the neighborhoods that it offers, uh, restaurants, that it offers, uh, stores that where you can shop and buy food and that also our schools are offering high-quality education. If we have schools that are not offering high-quality education, and we do, people will not move into our city because when you have children, that is the first thing you look at. What kind of education will they be able to offer my kids?
Okay. Thank you. And I believe we have another call waiting on the line. Caller?
Hello, I'm here.
Yes. How are you?
Very good, thank you. I, uh, I have a family down in Pearland. I come, I work in Houston. I go back and forth every day. Traffic is one of my biggest, uh, battles every day. So, I got two questions. One, over the last maybe couple of years, uh, I've seen the presence of Uber dramatically increase in Pearland. And I'm a frequent five-star rated Uber user all the time. And so, I wanted to get the prospective candidate's opinion as to what their feelings were on either attracting more ride-sharing companies and whether or not they would echo some of Houston's concerns regarding Uber and Lyft and these kinda things. And the second thing is, uh, the tollway. Are we gonna have one? Are we gonna have a, a nature, like a, a pay-as-you-go through 288? Cause I live right off of 101, right past 518. And if we could have some sort of road in the big middle of the stretch, but, uh, 288 all the way into town, uh, that would be huge and that'd be amazing. I'm actually thinking about leaving Pearland and, because of that type of traffic. So, I'm wondering, what are the thoughts or what are the, how far is that toll road gonna be running down to Pearland? Is it gonna run all the way through? And what are the city, what are the candidates' positions on, uh, pushing that through and making sure that that happens? So, one on Uber, two on the, on the tollway that I don't know if it's happening or not.
So, a two-for-one call, we appreciate that. Uh, thank you. And so, we encourage more, uh, for you to tell more of your family members to continue to move to Pearland. We love it, so. Uh, but, so, two questions and I know, um, I'll give an opportunity for all the candidates to answer, uh, but I'll just start by saying, uh, the toll road project has already been approved. It's just a matter of, uh, some other things being finalized before, uh, they continue to do it. So, the second question, uh, is the candidates will gladly address it because, uh, it's already come to fruition and then I'll let you, you all handle it in any order you like. So, Trent?
Go, I can talk about this. So, uh, the, the tollway project, uh, like, uh, like Quentin alluded to, uh, it's, it's moving forward. Uh, it's the, there's a, two parts to the project. One, the Brazoria County part, which goes from County Road 58, uh, to Clear Creek, which is the edge of Brazoria County. Uh, the term is used primacy, which means who's taking control of it. Brazoria County has control of that project. Uh, the north side in Harris County, primacy went to a private developer, Tech dot, neither Tech dot nor Hector, uh, had the capability of taking on that project. So, a private company has a conservative, a con, um, a conservative, um, uh, contract with Tech dot to be able to, uh, build that road and hold it for the next 49 years. Uh, and it's a for-project prof, a for-profit project for them. Um, so, that's moving forward. All the contracts have been written. Uh, that's currently moving forward and it should be scheduled to be, uh, in service early, uh, 2019. As far as multimodal traffic, uh, we've explored things when I was on staff. Uh, Metro, uh, had explored the idea of doing a park-and-ride, uh, that was gonna be at Smith Ranch Road right near the J.C. Penney's. Uh, ultimately, they abandoned that project. Uh, we've talked about having bus lanes that go east to west and reached out to the community, uh, but that wasn't, that, that wasn't well-received, so, that project, uh, didn't move forward. And I'm for Uber. It's a private company. I don't think we should, we should, um, keep private companies from moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Russo?
Uh, I'm a fan of Uber, but I, I do think it's important that we screen the drivers and that we take public safety into consideration. Um, obviously, you have heard some stories out there, uh, about some drivers and the screening process, so, I support it provided that, um, we do thorough background checks on the folks, uh, who are driving those cars. And as for the toll road, you heard it, it's coming in.
So, all right, Mr. Gray?
Yeah. Yeah, I, again, good questions. And oftentimes, everybody has this belief that city council can do everything, but unfortunately, we really can't. So, you know, the things that they've addressed that are addressed outside of what the responsibility of a city council would be. But believe me, I think we're all for moving the traffic along, getting things done. I can't answer any better than previously been said.
And as far as Uber?
Oh, Uber, yeah, it's a private thing. And I would, I'd be in favor if anybody could come into town and move the traffic around. That'd be great.
All right. Ms. Bell?
I also welcome anyone that can come in and move our traffic. I think we really need to have the discussions, getting our residents between Houston and Pearland and vice versa, because that's where a huge bottleneck is. I'm not exactly sure where the toll boots are going to be, the on-and-off places for the toll road. I know it's going to be in the grassy part of 288, but I know also, there's a lot of development going on all the way to Highway Six. You've got people that are going to be coming from Mannville and Rose Sharon, and they're going to come through Pearland to get to Houston. So not only are we concerned with our Pearland residents, we have to be concerned about that traffic as well that's coming through Pearland. So I believe there are conversations that we can have to get residents from Houston to Pearland, Pearland to Houston, having a shuttle going up and down 518. I'm for whatever we need to do to move our traffic around, because if it continues to bottleneck and we continue to have more residents come in, and which we will, you will have people that are discouraged and won't move to Pearland, because we will be a 1960, like in Houston. And that is just a nightmare.
No, agreed. Thank you all for the comments. I'm going to shift the topics a little bit. We are the legal women voters, so I'm going to switch it a little bit more into voting. And voting being a systemic problem in the state of Texas and all around this nation. So according to the U.S. Census in the year 2000, Pearland's population within the city limits was about 38,000 people. As of 2015, Pearland's population is estimated to have increased to 115,000 people within the city limits, 139,000 within the boundaries, and is expected to grow to 200,000 people by the year 2025. According to the Brazoria County Tax Office, voter turnout in the local Pearland elections since 2008 has averaged roughly 2,600 people. So it's roughly 4.5% of registered voters are 2.3% of the population. Do you believe this is an issue for council members? Why or why not? And if so, what are your plans to address the non-voting epidemic? Mr. Gray, you laugh, so that signals the first response.
You know, how can you fix people who don't want to vote? I have no idea. We've been trying to do that for as many years as I've been alive, you know? You've got close to 40% of the people who don't even keep up with politics at all. They go home and drink their cold beer and playing golf or whatever it is they do, and don't even talk about politics. So, you know, in the absentee voting, this last few days, it's been seventeen, a little over 1,700 people have voted. That's great. That's a great number. But out of 60,000 people that are registered voters, that's a very small number. I don't know how you get people interested in what's going on around the community. If they were, we wouldn't be in as desperate a shape as we are, not only locally but nationally. I don't have an answer to fix all the lazy, dumb people in this world.
Okay. So the other part was, you'd be willing to do something about it?
Yes. If there's something I could do to change those people, yes, I'd be glad to.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Bell?
I'll go. I'll go. Civic engagement for me is so very important. And I can, I am a Brazoria County voter, deputy registrar, so I can register people to vote because I believe that everyone should be able to exercise their right to vote. I think one of the ways that we start is education in the schools. We have early voting hours this week, last week, that were from eight to five. And if you work in Houston, like a lot of people do, it's hard to vote from eight to five in Pearland. If you have to be at work, you have to fight the traffic. So those hours make it a little difficult. Also, when our election falls in May, it's the Saturday before Mother's Day weekend. And so also, on this Saturday, we have a Pear Run in Pearland. As a part of council, I don't think that we should have special Pearland events that would discourage anybody from voting, that it should be, hey, it's voting day, everybody go vote. And we should have that kind of oversight policy to make sure those kind of, that kind of overlap does not occur. So I think that Texas ranks last as in the states across the United States in voting. So it's not just a Pearland problem. It's a problem across, across the state of Texas. But I believe that we just, as you get out and you encourage people and you get them engaged.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Press?
So, I'd say simply, if you could, if you could find the solution to get people to want to vote more, you don't need to be on city council. You need to be in a higher office, because it's a systemic problem across the nation. You know, I think the common phrase is, if apathy was a candidate, it'd win every election. It's, it is, it is sad to see from those of us who are civically engaged, the voter turnout to be as low as it is. You know, we would love to have more people engaged, and engage in a positive manner. We were talking a little bit earlier about, one of the difficulties about being a candidate is sometimes you vote, you engage with people who just dislike you because they associate you with politics, and they associate politics with evil. I don't know how to reach those people and tell them, look, I'm a citizen like you. All I want to do is improve my community. And then engage them on things that they, that they're concerned with. I can't get past that wall with some of those people. I think one thing that we're doing, or one thing that we can do better, Shadow Creek Ranch does a good job of putting the signs out, reminding people to vote. I think that should need, needs to go across the entire city. And the Brazoria County of being allowed to vote for any precinct at any location, I think helps.
Okay. Ms. Russo?
So I'm a resident of Shadow Creek Ranch, and I can tell you the key is to get people excited. And I think we've done a very good job of doing that in the last few years. When I first moved to my neighborhood ten years ago, not very many people voted. I think maybe 1% of the neighborhood. But the key is to really get in there, get to know people, help them solve problems. When you have an issue, collaborate, work together. And that's something that we did as a community. You know, so we grew those relationships, me, my neighbors, those national night outs. We helped organize national night outs, and then we invited the city to come and attend. So you had neighbors out there meeting neighbors. You had people that were solving problems in the community. And so when you ended up having a candidate or someone that was going to run and represent the area, you know, people were excited about it because they had seen, they had seen development, they had seen change. And I think that's the key. I mean, if you go to my Facebook page, you can see that there are a lot of people that are excited to get out and vote. And I think that's key, is really getting people excited to get out there and to make them realize that your local elections really have a big impact on your life.
Okay. I really want to take this opportunity. There's more questions, but for the sake of time, I know we're all having a great time here. I want to thank the viewers at home for watching and tuning in. Thank you callers for calling in with your questions. And I want to thank all the candidates. You know, it's my fault. I'll take the blame for pushing on time, but I know we wanted to get a lot across. So I would have loved to give you each an opportunity to close, but I don't believe we have the time to do so. But in any case, I invite all the residents and viewers to go out and search online. And each candidate, I believe, has really good information on the issues that they will address, their backgrounds, and what they hope to bring to council. And I want to thank, take this opportunity to thank all of them for coming
Thank you.
and driving through the traffic to get here. So, and again, I'll thank you viewers at home. Election Day is Saturday, May the 7th. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And as one of the candidates mentioned, in Brazoria County, there is vote centers. So you aren't restricted to go to a specific voting location. It's as if you were voting early, and you could vote at any location if you reside in Pearland. You can vote at any location in Brazoria County. So all you need is a proper form of ID. I believe you can go to 411.vot411. You can go to the Leagues website. There's great information there. So again, thank you all for tuning in, and thank the candidates for coming in, and I hope to see you at the polls.